Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We will be getting started here shortly. If you want to make yourself comfortable. All right, we're going to call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting in order and determine if a quorum is present. We do have a quorum and we also have Ms. Danes joining us live from Italy. So thank you for making the time. I think it's 12:30 over there. Later. Okay, well, we appreciate your service. Uh, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Corporal Castaneda, would you lead us, please? Thank you, Corporal. Okay, we don't have any citizens signed up, so we will go straight into consent. We have a motion.
Clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we have a consent?
We have one item on consent.
Then I'll move that we adopted.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a second. Second by Mr. Isbrand. All in favor?
This is just advertised for the street reconstruction.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you, Council. First item, a new business presentation by a presentation and discussion with the representative of the Texas Municipal Retirement System, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. As Council requested, uh, back at a previous council meeting, um, I believe in May, uh, you requested uh, staff to put together a special city council meeting and have a representative from TMR here to discuss options of changing the retirement system. Um, so we have, um, sorry, Mr. Kevin, Kevin what? Kenneth Oliver here to, to go through the options that Ms. Davis is handing out to you right now. Uh, and I will turn it over to him at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Oliver.
Thank you very much. My name is Kenneth Oliver. I'm one of the actuaries at TMRS. Um, and generally I talk to cities about the rates, Gatsby, all that sort of thing, but here we're talking, we're here to talk about some of the plan changes. Nora contacted me and told me that you guys were very interested in going to a two to one city matching ratio. So let me stop right there and explain what that means. Um, so first of all, we are a cash balance pension plan. Just so everybody knows, it's very straightforward. There's the employee deposit of seven percent. So seven percent comes out of the employee's check every year and it goes to their account. It grows at a guaranteed five percent interest. Year after year. When that employee retires and only when they retire. That amount that has grown is then matched. So it's an important distinction that the match, the money that the city is putting aside for the match is for in the future in retirement. It's very common for, for example, a seven percent two to one city to say, why isn't our contribution rate 14%? Well, it's not 14% because we're putting money aside. You guys are putting money aside for your retirees should they retire. So for example, if someone quits and refunds, well, they just gave up a lifetime benefits. And but that's actually an actuarial gain for the city because the money that had been put there for this person's retirement is kept in the city. Anyway, perhaps that was too much. Um, so this first option one, this is, this would be the 2024 cost for going to a two to one match and not changing anything else in your TMRS plan provisions. And you can see it's in red, two to one, option one. It takes your rate to 19.31%. Um, yes, that is a big jump. So your current 2024 rate is 13.30. And option one takes you to 19.31. Are there any questions about that part so far? Okay. I have a habit of just going on and taking people into the weeds, so please don't hesitate to speak up. So Nora added to this, uh, plan change study that I sent her and basically added some, some real dollars. So you could see, um, 2023, uh, the estimate was that total payroll would be about $3.7 million. So your 2023 rates is 1262. So doing the multiplication is 466, 944. You can see that. Going to 2024, the current, and likewise, we, Nora and I spoke this morning and I looked at the numbers from my side. She looked at from her side and we came up with an estimate of a 2024 payroll of $4 million. A nice even number. So we can talk about this. And then basically did the multiplication, the difference, going to option one, you can see that that monthly amount increases for, I'm sorry, the yearly amount increases from 532 to 772. And then she also multiplied by nine twelfths to get, um, obviously nine months of that. Are there any questions on that piece? Okay. So when I originally sent this plan change study to Nora, because I could see it's a big jump, you know, going 13, three to, I'm sorry, yeah, 13, three to 19, three, one, six percent. That's, that's a lot of money, especially when you're talking $4 million payroll. It's a lot of money. So we also looked into other possible changes that you could make. It's totally optional. Um, if you needed to mitigate the costs and that's where option two and option three comes in. So option two, it's, um, it basically turns off the transfers on the updated service credit provision. Okay, this is going to take a moment to unpack. Um, so back to the, you know, cash balance plan, employee deposits build up. Cities putting aside money to build up to hopefully match when that person retires. Great. So and again, it's, it's very simple math, you know, say the employee has $50,000 when they're going to retire. City's matching. If you go to two to one, they match two to one. So it's not a check the employee gets right then. It's $150,000. That's the amount that is annuitized and paid over monthly, but paid for life or however, whatever form of payment that the retiree takes. Straightforward. So with the updated service credit, it's kind of like a catch up. So, and it generally benefits two types of people. People have larger than expected salary increases over their career. You know, someone starts in the mailroom, they end up city manager or whatever. The other type, and this is where it comes for you guys, is when cities make improvements in their employee deposit or the match, it kind of helps catch up all those people. Because the way it is now, if you don't have an updated service credit and you increase your match, well, you know, Nora, her money's been going, you know, she will have basically a pot of money that is going to be matched at one and a half to one. And then assuming you went to this and you didn't have the updated service credit, well, you still do. A different pot of money that will be then matched at two to one. The updated service credit, it's kind of like a catch up to kind of catch up to people that haven't been at that benefit level so much. Forgiveness. They still could explain it better. Sorry. Um, I apologize. I'm so rude. I have with me. I apologize. Colin Davidson and Shannon Lucero. Colin Davidson is our City Services Director. Uh, Shannon Lucero is our, our Regional Manager, uh, for education and that sort of thing. They're very instrumental in all of this, but they wanted to come along, just see how things are going. Apologies. Let me get back to updated service credit. So again, it's a catch up for people that haven't had this sort of thing. Um, we can go into the weeds of the calculation if you like. Yes, no? Sure. Yes, sir.
Just one quick question. What, Mr. Oliver, what are the components of that 19.31% in option one?
Yes, sir.
What, what, what's moving?
What is moving? Uh, there are multiple things moving. First of all, you have your normal cost, which is increasing the 8.4 to the 11, 6, 1. That is your normal cost. That is the annual cost of your plant.
You know, is that optional or is that mandatory?
Your normal cost is mandatory.
Okay.
Um, that every city has a normal cost. Um, even if you paid off your unfunded tomorrow, you would still have a normal cost. So that's, that is the yearly cost of your plan. That is Bob's in the mailroom and he has 10 years of service. This pays for Bob's 11th year. That's, and that is required. That is a function of the plan. The prior service rates, that is what pays off the unfunded. So if you notice your prior service rate increases from 445 to 7.25. That increase directly pays off the increase in the unfunded that you see a couple of down where your unfunded goes from 2.1 million to almost 3.6 million dollars. So that prior service rate, that is the payment that you would be making if you adopted this over the next 20 years for this as part of your contribution rate. And let me take a moment and talk about the unfunded and that sort of thing. Cause people look at the unfunded and they think, oh my Lord, we only have a $4 million payroll and we have a $3.6 million unfunded. Is that what we're thinking? Well, yeah, that's the math, but the unfunded is, first of all, it is simply the difference between your liabilities and your assets. It is where you're trying to go. And, and unfunded is you can kind of think about it like a mortgage. So ideally you don't have a mortgage. Most people do, and it's no big deal. And why is it no big deal? It's no big deal because there's a plan to pay it off. And there's no surprise, there's not a surprise. It's just, there's, that's the plan to pay it off. Your unfunded will be paid off. This new piece of the amortization, if you adopt option one, will be paid off in 20 years. TMRS's funding policy will take every city, whether they want to or not, every city will be fully funded in time. So this will be paid off. The new piece is amortized over 20 years, um, which is, uh, better than industry standards. And a lot of systems are more in the 25, maybe 30 years. We are very conservative in our funding policy and that is shared with all the cities. Did that answer? Okay. And would you like me to continue on, sir? With the, the other pieces?
I think you've, you've got the foundation of it and that, that's very helpful. Then my, my second question is, as you've outlined these three options and that total contribution rate seems to go down a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Succeeding option. Is there a, um, is there an impact on our competitiveness for employees compared to other cities as that number goes down?
That's an excellent question. So that depends on who is, what neighboring cities are trying to steal from you right now. Um, you know, we all have neighboring cities and they're trying to. So for example, going to option two, the only difference is this updated service credits and I'm getting to, I'm getting the answer to your question, sir. Um, it turns off the transfer provision. So without the transfer provision of the updated service, it does this catch up calc, but it just does it while they've been at Castle Hills. With the transfer provision, it covers them at previous cities. So they're at San Antonio for 10 years before. The calculation actually goes all the way back to their first TMRS city. Some cities like that, some cities do not. Some people, when they're looking to jump ship and go to another city, they might think, hmm, who has transfer USC? You know, who is seven, two to one? That might be a nice one to go to. Um, it's, it's just a function of the city. So having the transfers on the USC can help with, with some of your recruiting. Most people, they just, they're concerned with the seven, two to one. You know, that's what they want at the end of the day. They want seven, two to one. You know, you tell them, which is great. You know, when you retire, the money that you build up, the city is going to match it two to one. And that's going to be amortized for your lifetime and your loved ones, however you work it out. Um, so it's great. So a lot of people don't see that, but some do. I don't know if that answered your question, sir.
No, it did. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, yeah, getting back to the options, option two, again, it takes off the transfer provision. Um, it does make, you know, a chunk of difference. Again, some TMRS cities have the transfer provisions, some do not. A lot of times it just kind of depends on what neighboring cities have. Um, and if it's actually been an issue, I mean, the good news is if you say you decide to adopt option two and you're like, great, you know, we need to save it. We don't go to two to one. We will save a couple of bucks. We're going to do option two. But it turns out, you know, actually we do need to add that back. You can always just adopt it the next year. You know, all of these, well, most of these are available to adopt, you know, in the future. I'll, I'll address that last part in a minute when we talk about option three. So option three, and again, these were just three options, uh, you know, the, the original, the goal, and then two options to possibly save money. Um, there are many more options that we could run that we could look into, but this is just like a couple of places to start. So let's talk about option three. Option three, um, introduces, it adds on, it takes off the transfer as well. So it's, it's got the two to one match, takes off the transfer, but it also turns off the retro on the cola. So I don't know if you've heard, um, legislation was passed HB 2464, thank you. That offered another cola option for TMRS cities. So the way our coal is calculated now is, you know, you guys have a 70% cola. And it's repeating. So every year, every January, we look at every one of your retirees and we look at their original benefit when they retired and we calculate the cult all the way back to when they first retired. 20 years ago, whatever. And we bring that all the way forward. And then we compare to the previous year and we got to make sure, cause you can never have less. So in, in, in the current environment, it's always going to be, it's going to be more, but it is possible. You know, say you reduce your call a percentage, you, whatever. There are some things we just make sure that it can't be less. Cause when someone gets a benefit, they keep the benefit. So that's our normal one. And every year it goes back and it calculates. And next year we go back for every, every retiree here, every retiree in TMRS where the city has a cola, we calculate this. The new option, all it does is instead of using the original benefit and going all the way back and calculating it, it just looks at what they had last year, their 2023 benefit. Well, this year, I guess. So when they're calculating your 2024 benefit, it looks at your 2023 benefit and it applies the increase in the consumer price index for 2022, because 13 months before. The consumer price index increased 6.45% in 2022. So if you adopted a 70% non-retro, every one of your retirees that's eligible, they have to be retired, they have to retire 13 months. So your 2023 retiree wouldn't get that until the next year. Everyone would get 70% of 6.45. So they get four and a half percent flat. Everybody gets the same. With, with the previous retro, it's a, it's a quirk of the math that there's actually, the one year increase is slightly different on back. There's the, the color report, did they get a copy of that? Okay. Sorry. I have a color reports. Apologies. I told you I didn't have anything. Um, that it actually shows. And would you like me to? Apologies. So that color report, it'll show for every one of your retirees. It doesn't show names, just your month and year of retirement. The original identity, the original benefits, their 2023 benefit, which is their current. And then it shows you what they would actually get 70 retro versus 70 non-retro. And again, I put this on here as a possible cost savings. Because in your case, in most cities' case, it is a slight cost savings and you could see it saves you what? 0.6%? Yeah. Um, you know, when you're talking $4 million payroll, it's not nothing. So we have a number of cities that are going to adopt this new non-retro. Um, I think we have five so far. It is not my job to encourage one way or the other. My job is to give information. I don't sell benefits. You know, whatever, you know, one of the beauty, one of the glorious things at TMRS is the benefits are decided by you guys. Which is good, because they're paid for by the city. Um, so it's, it's a wonderful thing. So again, I am giving information on possible courses of action. Are there any questions on any of that? Yes, sir.
Okay, so I, I just needed to get my head around what are the moving parts here? And from what I hearing, the moving parts are how we go about recruitment. Are we trying to poach from other city entities? And how does that impact our competitiveness? So, you know, the other moving part is what keeps employees where they are. So if we go to a different strategy of not poaching, but rather going into the private sector, looking at skillsets, acquiring and retaining, which one of the options would you say is the best one that gives us the most bang for the buck and saves us a little bit of money?
Thank you. Probably. That's a good question. So again, as far as competitiveness, I don't know. I could just think about like if I were your employee. Would I get in a twist over adopting the retro versus the non-retro cola? I don't know. I mean, it's, it it's such a small amount. I mean, you can see the dollars are, it's, it's not a huge dollar difference. Um, so they're probably not going to care about that, I would guess. Um, turning off the transfers basically. And I haven't looked at your employees. Um, so, you know, if you have someone who spent 20 years in a five, one to one city, you know, it's not going to necessarily hurt them. They, they just won't get the increase that they would have gotten had this transfer been in effect when you adopt the two to one match. Cause again, the two to one match with the USC makes it expensive. Um, if you don't have your to see, adopting two to one match is cheap.
Well, you know what I'm getting at. I mean, if the goal is to keep us competitive with a certain type of existing city employee that's someplace else, that's one thing.
Right.
I mean, I think everyone here is interested in benefiting our city employees and keeping those good employees.
Yes, sir.
But I'm, I, I guess this is our internal discussion tonight is how do we go about being competitive in recruitment? At the same time, we have to be budget minded. So that's where we need the guidance.
I think going two to one is a smart move. Most people who even understand just a little bit of TMRS benefits, they know they want to be at a seven percent two to one city. That's what they know. If you can afford the 1931, go for it. Um, if that's a little too much, you know, and you don't have to do it in this order. I mean, if you, you know, say you just did the non-retro cola and, and then you left transfers, the difference would be about the same. You know, you would save, it would put you in the 18. I actually have it. Sorry, I just had this for my back pocket. Um, apologies. Uh, I thought I had it. I do. There we go. Excuse me. Sorry. So for example, um, if you went, there we go. Yeah. If you went two to one, but you just went non-retro cola, your rate actually goes to 18, 6, 9. So as opposed to the 19, 3, 1. Um, you know, that's, I mean, this non-retro option, it's, it's ironic because it was put out there for other reasons, but the effect is for cities like Castle Hills that have had a 70 cola, 7% cola in place. It's a possible cost savings. It's, it's a lever you can pull. It's not a huge jump, but again, four million payroll times point six. Um, so I would guess the, the, you know, the least painful would be doing something like that. But, you know, and then it's just, it's just a question of did you want to possibly turn off the transfer USC? You know, I would suggest doing that over, because you could also recruit, reduce your, your USC percentage and then leave the transfers on there. But then that's affecting all of your employees, not just the ones that have time in another team or a city. Did I, did I answer your question, sir?
I, I think you did, but it informs other questions that I think I'll save for the city manager.
No, actually I, this is such a geeky thing. I like talking to cities, you know? I, I mean, Nora, we've had great conversations and it's, it's like a puzzle, you know, you just like what, what makes sense for that city, you know? I mean, yeah, if money's infinite, you just max out the benefits and the year's done, but you know, for that matter, you just pay everybody a million dollars and you know, but money's not infinite. And so it's, it's a, it's a fun little puzzle to try to solve and what makes sense. Um, so it's, it's, you know, I like to talk about, you know, the USC and the transfer and all these little details, because I'm a geek and and it's good to be intentional about these benefit choices.
Council, do we have any other questions? Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Oliver, do you have a, a lot of cities that you deal with that will go over the course of time through changes in these scenarios? Or are most try to get locked in at a certain option and left there?
We have a combination. Um, there are some that just pull the trigger and just increase their rate by 10% all at once. That's actually kind of rare. Usually they'll stair step their way there. Um, I mean, fortunately you guys are pretty much to max out benefits, which is impressive. You know, there's a lot of, you know, 5% one to one cities with no US or cola, and they're trying to figure out, oh, how do we adopt this new cola? How do we, you know, like, well, there's a lot of conversations we need to have. Um, so you know, you guys, so yes, many cities take a stair step approach. I'm just saying you guys are many steps along the way.
The reason I asked that question is I would assume that perhaps those that pull the trigger and it's one and done perhaps have deeper pockets, more cash versus some other cities like a Castle Hills with a very finite budget. And there's a pretty big gap between where we are now and where we want to be. And of course, at the same time, we're also changing our budget cycle. I think I'm just trying to understand if it's productive to look at it incrementally or if, and it sounds like from what you're saying, that a lot of cities do that. Is that based on their finances or is it based on that, that you know of, or is it based on other elements of this?
It's generally finances. Um, there are, there are some councils that they see the unfunded increase and that's too much to deal with. Um, there are, you know, and, and then there's just, the dollars aren't there, you know? We can't afford to, to even offer a cold. Again, this bill was put in place. It wasn't our bill, but we're all, we're, we're running with it. And it's actually, I think in the, in the long term, it's, it's going to be great for cities. But it was put in place for a lot of cities that had to turn off their But it was put in place for a lot of cities that had to turn off their COLA 10, 15 years ago because we changed our cost method and required cities to start pre-funding their COLAs. You guys have been pre-funding the whole time. And you can look back and see your contribution rate increase a little bit, not tons, but a little bit. But that means you've been pre-funding this whole time. This contribution rate, it's not just paying for the COLA of your current retirees. You're paying for Nora's COLA. You know, you're paying for, and just hers now, okay. But you're, you're, you're putting money aside. You know, and again, you've got your employee, they're building their account. Cities also building their accounts for when they hopefully retire. The money is there to pay, to annuitize, to pay them for life, take care of them.
I, I appreciate your comments because I think that I'll, I'll at least speak for myself. I don't want to be too conservative in this approach, but we also have to be fiscally responsible in this approach. And we're going, we're entering new territory here and trying to understand the financial impact and where those dollars come from to be able to do this. So having a sense of how other cities have navigated those waters is interesting to me to hear, hear your observations on it.
And if, if I may add, you're talking about a stair step approach. So options, I have too many things in front of me, excuse me. Option three, you know, yes, that also turns off the transfer provision of the updated service credit. So there are some people that wouldn't get that. But say in a year or two, you decide, okay, we need to bring that back. It's affecting recruiting. It's whatever. You turn it back on. And then with the updated service credit, because it's a calculation every January. I mean, yeah, they would have missed out on their previous one. But then maybe they're going to get a bigger USC because then we do the whole, you know, the whole new calculation that next January. So, you know, that might be an easy lever to pull. I'm, again, I give information. I'm not making a suggestion one way or the other. But I will point out that if you turn that back on, it's totally fine. I will point out back to what I was, pardon me. According to HB 2464, if you go non-retro, cities have, they can make it effective 1124, 1125, or 1126. After then, they can't do it. So in this example, say you adopt option three. And say that there's no legislative solution, HB 2464 goes, and then after 1126, you decide, you know what, we need to turn on the transfer provision again. Well, in that case, if there isn't a legislative solution, you would have to re-adopt the retroactive COLA at that point. Not a crazy difference in the cost. Adding the transfers is going to be more expensive, most likely than that COLA. But just be aware that there is a window for this new COLA option. You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes, sir.
On the unfunded actuarial, actuarial liability, Mr. Oliver, is these numbers that are shown here, I guess that's overall numbers. That's, that's what has to be paid in 20 years. Right? The, for example, when we go to 2.1 million to 3.5 million.
Yes, sir.
The. So what is the annual cost of that?
The annual cost of that would be your prior service rate and whichever you adopt. So for example, in option one, the prior service rate is 7.25%. You could, you multiply that 7.25% by $4 million and that would be your annual cost. If you go to your rate letter, we actually, sorry, I didn't send it. But it's online. Anyway, we actually break down the amortization basis and you can see the total payment due, but, but, but basically to answer your question, that's the total cost. It's that prior service rate multiplied by your pay.
All right. If, if my, if my math is right, which is suspect, I come up with $290,000 if you multiply seven and a quarter percent by 3.5 million dollars.
That sounds about right.
Okay.
You guys agree? I don't have my calculator with me and I'm worthless without it.
So, so that has to be paid every year.
Yes, sir. It is part of your contribution rate.
Right.
So this 19.31, part of the reason it goes up is to pay, you know, to amortize that extra $15 million, pay the 290 for that year. So that's part of that increase is to pay for that.
And that's not going to change much. I mean, with, with more employees, well, but I mean, it might go up a little bit, but it's never going to go down.
It. There could be a gain in the future. An actuarial gain that could offset it and decrease it that way. Likewise, if you say you just did option three, but then you decide to increase benefits in another way, it could increase and that new layer of amortization would be paid off in another 20 years. You know, it's, it's this layering effects. And, and that's how we come up with the prior service rate. And the whole point is to come up with a smoother prior service rate. So it's not jumping all over the place.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Oliver, it appears that there is a lot of different levers that we could implement. And from what you've said, it sounds like many of them are already implemented.
Most of, so. TMRS is kind of like a cafeteria plan. I'm not in love with that term, but basically there's this number of this. And in total, there are, before HB 2464 came in and there were, I could once calculated 3,024 different plan possibilities. Now, because you guys are so far down that road, unless you're going to start slashing plan, you know, plan benefits, which probably would not be good for retention, you have fewer options. There are still quite a few. You can play, again, play with USC because the match directly increase, you know, the match in the USC, that's the big driver of what's increasing your rates. You already have the COLA. So there's a little bit because you've got, you know, people, your employees will have a new, a little bit higher benefit if this is adopted. And then there would be a COLA on top of that benefit. So, but the biggest driver is going to be the USC. And that's why we're kind of playing around with, with different options there.
And so I, I guess I see that, but all that we hear is two-to-one. And so what I'm trying to understand and learn is are other components as critical or is it just two-to-one that's the soundbite that gets discussed all the time?
As far as employees talking to each other, like my plan has this, your plan has that. I would guess for the most part, talking 72 to one, but the better ones to ask would be these two over here.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Yes, to your point and kind of to the.
Mr. Davis, can I get you to raise the mic so the people can, or Ms. Daines can hear you clearly?
Yeah. Can everybody hear me? Okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Yeah. I'm going to lean on this diaphragm. That's all right for everybody. Just to take a little weight off my foot here. Yeah. So the easy answer to your question is I, I think it's really hard to generalize exactly what the most valuable benefit to any individual employee is. So from a very basic level, I think if you were to give like an elevator pitch of TMRS and you were to tell somebody you put 7% in, it earns interest. And then the city matches it with one and a half to one, a two-to-one, a one-to-one match. To your point, I think that is where a lot of employees, especially, I don't know what you do for onboarding or when you talk to employees about their benefits, but my guess is the match from the city. As you can tell from the conversation you're having with Kenneth, is that a conversation when you get into trying to explain updated service credit, COLAs, some of the nuances of the plan, I think that's where it is more difficult for employees. So to your overall question, Mr. Mayor, is that I do think that a lot of employees, when they look at things like that, they see those top line items, those kind of basics of the cash balance plan, like a two-to-one match, like a one and a half to one match, whatever that case is. And that's kind of probably what they understand about TMRS as opposed to some of those, those other kind of features. And if I may, kind of to this overall discussion, one of the things that I know that Kenneth didn't have a chance to speak to, it sounds like a big part of this conversation is really about recruitment and retention, which is a huge part of this whole overall discussion. And kind of outside of that discussion, we just wanted to make sure you're aware as, as like Kenneth mentioned, I'm the director of our city services department. And it's really important to me that cities know about all the services that you do have available. And for instance, one of the things that we could prepare for the city that may be helpful to you is just a customized Castle Hills fact sheet recruiting flyer that you could hand to prospective employees. And one of the things it does is it says, you know, very much the top, you know, one of the great benefits of working for Castle Hills is you become a member of TMRS. And if you work for a certain amount of time, you could draw a lifetime benefit. We actually list the specifics of your plan. So for instance, if you started at 25, worked 20 years at 45, you could draw this $1,000 a month benefit, whatever it is. And kind of says, you know, how many employers provide this level of benefit to their employees? And so we do have things like that that we could provide to the city that, you know, maybe take the edge off on some of these things. If you're, if you're struggling with these issues. Not to mention, we also have, I know you were talking about kind of what your competitors, you know, I don't know what you consider those cities that you compete with. But we do have the availability, either we could show you where they are on our website or even run them for you personally to let you know any kind of cities that you compare yourselves with, what their plans are. So, you know, while, while Kenneth was speaking, I was kind of looking through briefly. And you do have cities in this area that have everything from a one and a half to one match, like Castle Hills to a one-to-one, some of the larger cities, you know, do have a two-to-one match. But even to the point of when you are comparing yourself, it's who you're competing with, like City of San Antonio has a two-to-one match. But they only have a 6% employee contribution rate as opposed to the 7% here in Castle Hills. So that's why it's really hard to know for sure what drives an employee's decision to work for the city or not, how big a piece of the benefits package TMRS is and what they're really valuing. Because as, as Kenneth mentioned as well, some employees may not care about a transfer feature, some might. Some employees care about the two-to-one, others might say, oh, 7% amount of my paychecks a lot. So it really is a, a factor and that's what we see all across the state.
I think if she liked, that would be very helpful because I know that two-to-one is kind of the soundbite that we hear all the time. But I don't hear anybody saying, oh, we're glad that we have 7% as opposed to six. And so to the extent that we can really identify that and put that in front of our employees and also people, potential employees, I, I think that would be helpful. I, I think the next question might be for Mr. Oliver, but I'll, I'll, I don't want to make you walk twice.
No, it's okay. Yeah. I, I do, I genuinely appreciate that. I'm actually happy. I got down to one crutch today at physical therapy. See, you're getting to see me move around much better. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm happy to move around at any kind of pace. One last thing, this may be a question again to Kenneth, I just wanted to mention that he, I know when you guys were talking about different strategies that might be available to you, you know, you mentioned about stair stepping and things up. We have had cities that have looked at making benefit increase, increases to their plan. And one of the things that they've considered is kind of having maybe a three to five to seven year plan in the sense that, let's say, for instance, as, as Kenneth has noted on here, if the city makes no changes to their plan, the cost would be 13.3% of payroll for 2024. We've had cities in the past that have had a goal and said, you know, we'd really like to get to that 19, but we can't afford it right now. And they've even considered paying an extra to TMRS. Like, let's just say you guys decide as, as part of this discussion, that maybe a percentage of like 15% is something that you could afford this time. The city could pay that above amount and that would just go to actually pay off those liabilities, dollar for dollar going forward. So then let's say if we came back a year from now, now instead of, I'm just making these numbers up, instead of 19.3, maybe it's 18.9. And then the following year, it's 18.7. It's something that over time, as you can imagine, as you're paying things down, just putting away, it's like to Kenneth's analogy, paying money off on your mortgage. It's putting that extra payment away every month. So just wanted to kind of mention that as something that could be an option for the city that if you decide that the short term or the long term, and again, as Kenneth's mentioned, never, never for us to say what's best decision for you guys, but just kind of wanted to mention that as well. There's always the possibility if the city can afford it to put away extra money now, maybe they can't afford the full benefit increase.
Mr. Davidson, how many cities, if you, I don't know if you know exactly, or you could guess to me, but you know, when we first looked at TMRS 26, 2018, there was quite a few in our area that were still a one and a half to one. And when we looked at it just recently, I think we're one of three. Where do we rank on the state level? I, I don't know if you know what that looks like.
I don't know where it looks exactly, but I can tell you that yes, the two-to-one match, not only is that the most common of the matches we kind of have. It's interesting. We have kind of a, again, as, as Ken mentioned, there's so many options you can choose from. A lot of our really smaller cities, so let's say less than 20 employees, they, they a lot of times when they're starting out, maybe like Castle Hills, they started like a 5% one-to-one plan, the kind of baseline TMRS plan. And then all of our largest cities, for the most part, other than San Antonio, all have that seven, two-to-one kind of maxed out plan. And then we've got cities all the way in between. I will tell you the majority of our membership, just because most of our larger cities is covered by a 7% and a two-to-one plan. I think it's in the 70 to 90% of the total members in TMRS were covered by that. Because again, the vast majority of our larger cities have a two-to-one plan. And I know you kind of mentioned system wide, which Kenneth may be looking up as well. I was going to tell you just what I was looking up while we were talking earlier. In this area of cities, they do not have a two-to-one match. In this, you know, region, we've got, Welder has a one-to-one match. Stockdale has a one-to-one match. Somerset has a one and a half. Smiley is one-to-one. Sandy Oaks is one-to-one. San Diego is one-to-one. St. Hedwig, Rock Springs, Puff and Potite and Pierceall are all ones that have lower than a two-to-one match. And every other city in the area has a two-to-one match.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Mr. Joyce, go ahead.
Last question, I promise. Does anybody have greater than a two-to-one match?
They do not. By statute, we, the only options that are available to cities to adopt for their employees are a one-to-one, one and a half to one or two-to-one match.
I think you said something and I've heard it on the outside and I just want to clarify, it's my understanding that we can do a one-time distribution to help offset future payments. Do you have some rough math on what that looks like?
Now, that is a great Kenneth Oliver question. That sounds like a, a good math equation that he could run for you. But the easy answer is that it's dollar for dollar. So if you had, you know, if you're looking at this and you had $2 million in liability and you had $2 million sitting around and you wanted to pay $2 million to TMRS, that's the best use you decided of those dollars. It would go dollar for dollar to pay off the liabilities that you have within, within TMRS. So, you know, that, that's, I had mentioned earlier, you could just pay above your contribution rate. But the same goes for a single lump sum payment. If you wanted to do that, that's absolutely an option that cities have available. And what those cost savings would be, that's certainly something that Kenneth and our other actuary could calculate for you to say, you know, again, if we had this and this was something part of a plan to pay off the liabilities over time, what could we do to pay those off?
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. I appreciate it. Congratulations on your promotion.
Oh, thank you. I thought you were congratulating me for the foot as well. To me, that's a bigger deal.
Congratulations for one crutch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
He probably did it under athletic purposes. Mine was not.
Yes, he's well deserved for Colin. Actually, he's, he's actually done how many different jobs at TMRS? So yeah, it's a good story. Shannon was also recently promoted. Anyway, yes, a question about the lump sum. So as Colin said, cities can at any time pay extra, either extra like percentage wise, and they just simply do it when they submit their payroll. There's a little dropdown, additional little contribution amount, you put what the rate is. You know, say you, say you weren't going to adopt anything and, but you're 13.3, you know, when Colin talks about, you know, we're like, let's start paying a 15, let's stair step our way. So maybe we can adopt this next year, the year after. Then you're just like, okay, we're going to start doing 15 now and maybe next year we go 16 with the idea that we keep an eye on it and get there then. You know, which is a great plan. If that's what you want to do and you're not ready to, to just pull the trigger now on any of these, that's completely fine. And I can do studies, excuse me, for you of, like, how fast could you, you know, pay off your unfunded? If you say we're going to pay an extra percentage or we want to pay it off in 15 years or we want to send you a million dollar lump sum. Cool. We'll totally take the money. You know, I, we can also do other, I mean, for another city last year, they wanted to, they were almost topped out on their benefits. They wanted to adopt 20-year retirement, which you guys already have. But they wanted to pay a lump sum to kind of help pay for that. So I kind of worked through them like, okay, if you put this aside, it helps, you know, offset the future costs of that sort of thing, you know? And we can do that sort of thing. There's a lot of different things we can do for you, if that's what you want to do. Are there any questions on lump sums, additional contributions, that sort of thing?
So there's no option for keeping the transfer USC and then the retroactive COLA going away? There's not an option for that? There is? I mean.
Yeah, yeah. If, if. Say it again, sir. I apologize.
Is there an option to? Is there an option to keep the transfer USC but not the retroactive? Because you have option, no, no.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I just ran some other, these were just some of the possibilities that I'd sent. Um, so for example, option four right here. It keeps the transfer USC, excuse me, it keeps transfer USC, but it changes your cola to the non retro. And I believe it went to eighteen, six, nine or something like that versus the nineteen, three. So it's a little bit of a savings. Again, as you can see with the, uh, cola report, you know, we're only talking a couple of dollars. And yes, you're pre-funding for the active, so you're talking a couple of dollars going forward, but it does add up and you, there is that lever you can pull to possibly save it if you want to keep the transfers. Again, that is completely your choice.
Thank you, Mister Oliver. Council, do we have any more questions? Okay, hopefully you're not going too far because we might have more questions, uh, when we get into discussion on the next item.
Uh, no problem, like more discussion today or?
Yes, sir. We have one more agenda item.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can hang out. That's no problem. Yeah.
We'll, we'll make it quick for you.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, next up, we have discussion, possible action on the city's contribution to the Texas municipal retirement system. We do have somebody signed up to speak. Mister Castaneda.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, residents, uh, Rim Castaneda, President of the Castles Police Association. Uh, just wanted to say a few words on behalf of our association in regards to the retirement system. Uh, for this past several months, our command staff has been working effortlessly, effortlessly, including our chief and bringing in a incentives, uh, increasing our wages. It's brought a surge of applicants thus far. Uh, probably more than I've ever seen in the past seven and a half years I've been in this department. Um, obviously we're making progress in that aspect. The next obstacle that I see that we're coming across is actually keeping these officers and devoting their careers to our department. Um, like I were speaking with Kenneth Oliver, all the little, uh, arithmetic behind the two to one. Our command staff doesn't settle for less when it comes to quality applicants working for our department. Um, as you can see, you meet officers, um, they open their arms to sponsorships, putting them through the academy. Um, that was just the whole intent, goal behind our command staff was keeping our reputation with these type of quality applicants. So, uh, I just believe that if we don't set up for less, I, I, I don't believe anyone above us should settle for less when it comes to any type of benefits or pay or retirement system. Not saying that's what any of y'all are doing, because I can tell you, I have pretty much the electric capacity right here to go through what Kenneth Oliver just fed you right now. It's kind of hard to understand there, but I just ask for everyone's undivided in a careful consideration when it comes to these type of matters because um, just listening to Kenneth Oliver and him explaining other than what's just two to one. Uh, the USC, uh, the cola and whatnot, and I understand what Kurt May was trying to get at when he was asking about the competitive competitiveness and poaching on other cities like that. Kind of looks like, put them in a situation, you could answer that question, but it looked like it would be some type of gain for us if we were to poach on other cities like they do for us and what they've been doing for the past several years, honestly. Um, is including the cities they, he brought up to St. Hedwig, Somerset, we're talking about cities that probably have one officer on duty at a time. Uh, castles, we're living the heart of San Antonio, basically. It's only getting busier. Um, I believe in what you are doing to improve our economic development, uh, bringing in more revenue, more businesses. And it's, and I, as a police officer, I, I strongly encourage it. I believe this Castle Hills, the city has a lot of potential. And it's always had the same potential. And, uh, I believe I speak about the association when I say that, uh, we agree that whatever you decide, it's not just best for us, but best for the city as well. We don't want to be greedy and just take from the city and keep on taking and taking and not giving back. And that's why we're trying to, as much as we can do with the association to improve that aspect with community engagement and stuff like that. So just wanted to say those few words about the association and, uh, we hope that you all take that most utmost careful consideration in making this decision and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, council, Mister Rappley.
Are you still on six point one or did you move?
We're at six point two.
Okay, how do you know if you had moved to that one?
Yes, sir. So I, I guess one of my concerns is how we would fund uh, the proposed change. I don't know if you and Miss Davis have any consideration. Were any of the folks of TMRS have any creative solutions? Obviously, uh, at a minimum, we're looking at another approximately hundred thousand dollars at the most conservative plan. Uh, and we know that money doesn't fall out of sky. So I, I personally would be curious to see what the plan would be to offset that expense.
Okay, when you're looking at the five thirty two, that's ultimately where we stick with the plan. We're moving up with an increase of seventy two thousand dollars. So we would have to put that in the proposed budget automatically, um, staying with that plan. And so the obvious differences that you come out to would be, you know, the option one is two forty, option two, one fifty one, and then option three, one twenty eight. Of course, that's based on a twelve months. We were doing a nine month budget. And that sort of changes there as well. From a perspective of revenue, um, you know, we, we, we do see revenue up. We're optimistic about that and hope to come back to council at the next meeting with, you know, revenues for next year. Um, we have a healthy general fund reserve. Speaking to Miss Davis, um, and Miss Wallace, who helps us out as well. You know, if there's a need to, uh, do a one time, um, um, from the general fund reserve to help fund it. Um, but ultimately, I'm not too worried about as we move forward to this year's FY twenty four adopted budget, doing a nine month budget. It's what we need to prepare accordingly for the following year for FY twenty five, because that's going to be a larger piece. And so I think if we do our due diligence, uh, from that aspect, we'll have to prepare even before starting the proposed budget to make sure that revenue is there to have that or FY twenty five moving forward. Um, I think the transfer USC, those credits are important uh, for retention. Obviously, you could see that's nineteen employees out of our sixty some employees right now that it packs. That's one third of our employees. I think that's very important when you transfer, um, and retaining that. Um, I'm not speaking from opinion of myself, but I think it's important for, you know, police and fire and um, if we're trying to recruit other public safety employees, um, that's something they're going to consider as well. So um, I, I obviously think we need to move to two to one. That's an, an sort of a no brainer, but the transfer you, USC, I'd be concerned about that. Um, so it's a matter of just trying to budget accordingly in FY twenty five for a full year of this new two to one.
Thank you, Mister Rappley, Mister Isbrand.
Um, ju- just a couple of thoughts. Um, it struck me that one thing Mister Oliver says that these are some of the options. And I'm curious what other options might look like. Um, if there's a wide flexibility there or if this pretty much does kind of scope it all a little bit. Um, I don't think anybody is going to debate the desire for two for one, right? So it's just how we get there. And this is a little bit of new ground, not a little bit, it's a lot of money. So it's a lot of new ground for us to try to cover. And the benefit of having this nine month, um, fiscal year that we'll have coming up is it gives us sort of a baby step to get into it. But I think it's going to really be a challenge to the council to look at, okay, once if we go down this path, um, this is a long-term commitment that we're making, um, at what cost in other areas. And maybe flipped another way, uh, at what opportunities in other areas. And this is where I think things like the work that's being done around economic development, promoting new business, things of this nature are also important to us so that we look at this in terms of what, what kind of revenues will come into the city to be able to support this long term. Um, so that we don't have to once again go to the residential property owners and ask them to absorb this. That said, it's my personal opinion that whether it's a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, it's a very negligible cost for what we get in return. In terms of all the city employees, not just the police officers, not just the firefighters, but the administrative staff, the courts, the everybody, the caliber of people that we will have serving the city and what they deliver back to the residents, I think is if I could say it again, a somewhat negligible cost, at least in my mind. The reality though is I think that a step system could be very beneficial to us so that we have the ability to plan accordingly, to see how it goes, to be testing, to be thinking of those new opportunities, um, to generate the revenue that would support this. So just as a point of discussion, I put that out there.
Thank you, Mister Isbrand. Mister May.
Well, now that I know that a third of our employees are in the transfer category, I mean, that, that does mean something to me. Every year I get older, I look at my own career as a body of work. And honestly, if we're going to keep people that we value, the two for one is a no brainer. The question is, how can we tweak that so that we leave some options open? And we don't lock ourselves in an unsustainable trajectory. I think that's what, what councilman Isbrand is getting at. So I would be interested in an incremental aspect of this, but, uh, go forward with a two for one commitment.
Miss Haley.
Since we already do the transfer USC and the retroactive cola, I don't see taking that away to be an option. We already do it. So it, it to say, no, now we're not going to do that. I, I would not, not be in favor of that. And I'm I'm big on finding the way, finding the revenue, looking for how we make this work. And that we can't afford not to move ahead with this and, and be prudent, but also make it work. You know, we've got good people, we want to keep them, we want to get more and we do more, we get more. And it all feeds on itself. So I'm in favor of two for one, no brainer, how we finesse it, okay. But I, you know, I think we, it's something that we, we just do. That's all.
Thank you, Miss Haley, Mister Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we have to do it. And as, as Haley said, the only question is how are we going to get there? Where are we going to find the money? So perhaps we should, uh, ask Mister Rappley to work out a few more of these scenarios, perhaps keeping the step idea in mind that Mister Isbrand mentioned. And, uh, as soon as possible, get that in front of us with an understanding of what the annual cost is. We're all kind of throwing around these numbers right now, but you know, what is seven and a quarter percent of four million, all that kind of stuff. That's, that's what we need to know. And what are the options with respect to annual costs? That's my suggestion.
Thank you, Mister Joyce. Council, we need a motion. What I'm hoping that we could get a motion for would be a motion to authorize the city staff to put together a plan on how to proceed with two to one. I specifically would like to see how we are going to fund this. I, I'm with Miss Haley that our employees deserve the best and this is long overdue. I think we've taken care of a lot of other pressing issues in the city. And this is something that we need to address now. But I, I'd like to have a idea of where those funds are going to come from. And if it means that we have a ten percent increase in ad valorem that we think is going to cover that, then that's fine. I, I, I think that showing that is essential to giving us the comfort that we need to move forward and make sure that this isn't going to have ripple effects, negative ripple effects for our finances for the city. So that's my personal opinion, but I'll entertain a motion.
So, so Mayor, I would move that we express our intention to move to two for one and that we direct the city manager and city staff to continue to do due diligence in terms of working with TMRS on potential options as well as uh, attempting to define the budget impact and find, and revenue resources that would be available to support this and that it be brought back in a timely fashion so that we may begin our budget, uh, hearings next month.
Thank you, Mister Isbrand. Do we have a second?
I, I have a second, but a friendly amendment. And that would be that we direct the city staff to give us options about upfront funding and how that would impact on our vote and our choices.
And I'm certainly happy to accept that friendly amendment. Thank you, Mister May.
Okay. Any discussion, Mister Joyce, Miss Haley, Miss Danes?
I'd just like to remind, remind ourselves that we have a lot of commercial property in this community that pays taxes too. We always end up with the impression that the residents are the people that are responsible for funding all of this. And there's a lot of investment here on top of that. So there's a lot of places to look for how we're going to do that. And I'd like to see if that's available, how that, how that is divided between a resident homeowner and also all of our commercial property, that what the percentage is of, of which, I don't know if that's possible or not, but I'd just like to, for us to remember that we're, the residents are not the only people that pay the taxes here.
Thank you, Miss Haley. Mister Rappley, you have any comments before we call for the vote?
No, I, I think, um, I, I got an understanding. I think again, we'll, we'll have preliminary revenues for next year's budget. Um, again, putting a nine month budget together with what we need to pay for this, um, change in match will, will be feasible. I think again, it's looking at next year to say, because again, we do this budget, starting October first will be our new budget. I mean, I think TMRS doesn't matter that we're doing a nine month because they go off a twelve month. So we just need to make sure we prepare accordingly, um, as we move forward. Again, with developing that next twelve month budget for FY twenty five, that the money's there. Like again, I'm optimistic that we do have the funds. We, I'm sure would be able to do two to one exactly how the option one is in a nine month budget. It's just a matter of when we develop that twelve month, starting in FY twenty five, is that bigger delta there in that case? That's, that's my only concerning and not having, you know, there's only so much forecasting you can do, uh, from that standpoint. What I provide is preliminary revenue is, you know, hey, here's how we're going to support the FY twenty four nine month budget. But I think we can look down the road a little further to see and, um, predict if we're funding will be there in some form or fashion. Um, but that equation again is, you know, we have a, a healthy general fund reserve that we can use one time. Or optimistic because sales tax is up and then we haven't got the certified, uh, for property taxes. So we don't know what that looks like just yet from an ad valorem revenue portion as well. So just giving you all those factors. Miss Davis, anything else?
Thank you, Mister Rappley. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. And thank you, everybody from TMRS for being here with us tonight. Okay, next up, we have item six point three, discussion and possible action author, the city manager to advertise for bids for a street restoration for Town View, Mister Rappley.
Mayor Council, this is a result of, uh, Saws doing the water main replacement on Town View. Um, before the project started, Mister Harada, Mister Zamarone had healthy, had healthy discussions with Saws staff about restoration. And so they have done lateral cuts along Town View. And they basically owe the city about fifty thousand worth of restoration. And so my thought process, even before it started was I want to mill and overlay the entire street. Uh, they're on board with that, but they're only going to give fifty thousand. So they came to us with an in-house contractor that said, we're going to do it for two hundred twenty five thousand and the city would pay us a hundred seventy five thousand. I said, no, we'll take a crack at getting our own competitive bids and reduce that. And so, um, through the procurement process, we're going to advertise this relatively quickly. Get bids for a mill and overlay of the entire street, then do an ILA for them to give us the fifty thousand as a result of the project. And so my goal is to bid this out over the next couple of weeks, bring it back for council, have that done and then, uh, get our contractor started on Town View as soon as possible. And then Saws would pay us the fifty thousand. But this starts the process to advertise.
Thank you, Mister Rappley. Council, Mister May.
Mister Mayor, I move. Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council authorize the city manager to advertise for bids for the street restoration of Town View.
Thank you, Mr. May. Second by Mr. Joyce. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. Next up, we have a discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number 2023 dash zero six dash 26, amending chapter eight, section eight dash 109, eight dash 110, eight dash 111, eight dash 112, eight dash 113, eight dash 166, eight dash 195, and eight dash 232, and chapter 50, section 50 dash 520 by repealing ordinances to the 2015 additions of the international code and the 2014 edition of the national electric code by adopting the 2021 additions of the international building code, international residential code, international energy conservation code, international property maintenance code, international fuel gas code, international plumbing code, international mechanical code, and by adopting the 2020 edition of the national electric code and by revising references to the international codes in section 50 dash 520. As you all may remember, this was previously discussed and this was a matter of addressing the year, which was a typo. We wanted to make sure that we're doing everything as best as possible. So please don't make me read that again. Uh, Mr. Joyce?
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2023 dash oh six dash two six landing chapter eight, as noted in agenda item 6.4.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Second by Mr. May. On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, next up, we have an item that I would like to table, but I don't know that that will do any good. So I'm going to go ahead and read it. Discussion and possible action to accept the resignation of Alderman Joe Isbrand from city council. I could introduce introduce this agenda item, but I think it's appropriate that we let Isbrand.
Mayor and council have approval of agenda item 6.5.
We have a motion, Mr. Isbrand, a second by Mr.
But I have a question first.
Well, we have a motion on the table. Mr. Schnau is going to get mad at me. We have a second by Ms. Haley, Mr. May.
How long can you hold on before it's effective?
I believe Mr. Schnau would most accurately answer that, but it is my understanding that my obligation is to fill this role until such time as a individual is identified and qualified to serve in the position.
And I agree with what Mr. Isbrand said. The the resignation will become effective automatically. No matter what the council does on Mr. Isbrand's motion, will become effectively eight days after Mr. Isbrand submitted the resignation. By accepting it this evening, it frees you up to go to the next agenda item and and begin the process to look for and possibly select a candidate, an individual to fill this position until the May 2024 election. Under the Constitution, Article 16, Section 17, Mr. Isbrand will remain as a holdover member of the council even after the resignation is accepted. So he will be able to vote, for example, on item 6.6 or 6.7, participate just as a normally as a member of the governing body until the governing body either appoints an individual and that individual then takes the oath of office. Or the council has the option of calling an election. That's an expense that's unnecessary, but that is an option. As long as there's only one vacancy on the governing body in a general law type A city, the council has the ability to appoint the successor to to appoint the replacement. And that person would would only replace Mr. Isbrand after that appointment is made by the council and that person takes the oath of office.
Thank you, Mr. Schnau. Uh, council, any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Uh, next up, we have discussion and possible action on application process to assist city council in filling a vacancy for place one on the city council. Uh, as y'all may have remember, I believe it was 2019 when we
2020, spring of 2020, when Mr. Paul was put in as interim.
Oh, it's spring of 2020. I apologize, but we accepted applications. And I think that would be the most prudent way for us to go forward after filling Mr. Isbrand's position, and hopefully he can be part of that process as well. My hope is that we could open applications effective immediately and call for them to close July 6th, which would allow us enough time to have those in the packet for our July 13th meeting. And I think, Mr. Isbrand, you will be available to be at a regularly scheduled meeting. I'm sorry, the 11th, yes. And at that point, we could name your successor. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an application process as outlined with July 6th being the deadline. I think it's perfectly in keeping with the principles that Councilman Isbrand ran on, which is transparency and reaching back to the community. And I do think it will inform this council.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Haley. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, next up, we have deliberation and evaluation of the performance of the city manager and take possible action, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551 dot 074 Personnel Matters. To deliberate the employment employment evaluation duties of the city manager and take possible action in open session regarding the same. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the time to do this evaluation. As city manager, I've since day one, always elected to keep my evaluation out in the open. Good, bad, or indifferent. I welcome any feedback on my performance. Any feedback just helps me help staff. But I I would, if you would allow me to read a statement real quick from that standpoint, so. In my previous evaluation in December 2020, I provided a number of items which I believe are sustainable improvements to the organization and the city as a whole. During my last evaluation, I let city council know this is a team effort, so I can't say that I did this or made this happen. I could say personally, I'm pleased with the significant positive changes in Castle Hills, especially over the last three years. I reference our team as the collective and collaborative teamwork comprised of our employees and you as council. We have continued to deliver balanced budgets, transparent budgets that have created financial transparency through policies. This has been evident in our double A credit rating, which has been affirmed uh, three times. So two by choice, one by not choice. Um, in the last two years to obtain certificates of obligations to fund our street and drainage projects. The double A credit rating, as you know, is an excellent rating for the city of Castle Hills. We have continually strived to improve the financial condition, the infrastructure, and how we provide services to the city. After my evaluation in 2020 December, I was rewarded with a new three-year contract in March of 21. I'd like to thank council for the trust and faith you've had in me as the role of city manager and for the city of Castle Hills. Over the last couple of years as a team, we've taken necessary steps to improve our organization, its culture, the infrastructure, the communication process, and other internal improvements. We've been able to complete two phases of street improvements consisting of 14 reconstructed streets. We've continued to address our maintenance through our plan by micro-surfacing, which has done 25 streets just alone in the last two years. Um, and this will finalize our maintenance plan established in 2019 this year. In regards to drainage, we find we finalized phase two, Banning Carroll, which is an extension from phase one to address flooding along this corridor. In regard to communication, we've been able to develop and launch a new website, develop informational brochures related to city services such as sanitation code compliance for our residents. Branding efforts, including new street sign project, we've utilized funds through related to COVID, including ARPA, to procure equipment for our city departments and fund other projects within the city. We've had an assessment done, our aging IT infrastructure, and have utilized this roadmap to complete uh, an overhaul of the city's technologically equipment within City Hall. We've done a reorganization at City Hall to better streamline our development services with residential commercial permitting process. We've been proactive in code environment, and we've established a business friendly environment with our cuss commercial industry in Castle Hills. Moving forward, we still have work to do. We need to finish and close out the final streets for reconstruction, finish phase three of the Carrollwood Drainage Project, and continue to work intergovernmentally with the city of San Antonio and Bear County to gain that funding, establishing that partnership to complete the work and tie into Lock Hill to address flooding concerns along this road. We would need to finish and finalize North Manton Drainage Project over the next year. Address quality of life projects like enhancing the commons with additional amenities and taking the steps to implement the newly developed comprehensive plan adopted by city council. Internally, as a part of the organization, we look to update the personal policy manual, move to online permitting, improve our ISO, and centralize our financial system. I'd like to thank mayor and council for their leadership and guidance and taking the time to conduct my evaluation. I really appreciate the mayor and council providing me with the latitude to do my job as city manager, which was always the case, which was not always the case early on in my tenure. We have worked collectively together to make this city and this community a better place to live, work, and play. As I said in my last evaluation, it takes council staff working together as a team to achieve current and future goals. We develop long-term plans, taking the steps to improve the quality of life and works towards a sustainable governance system in Castle Hills. I've continued to evaluate areas of the organization uh, in regards to city services. And with staff and council's feedback, again, we do this together. The city of Castle Hills, um, which you all know has tremendous employees who do their jobs on a daily basis to assist residents with customers' service being paramount. In closing, I'd like to recognize the work that our department directors do. Mr. Harada, Chief Zuniga, Chief Ludwig, our admin team, Mr. Zamiron, Ms. Davis, Ms. Zelenek, Ms. Franco, Ms. Vazquez, and Mr. Myers, their professionalism and hard work makes the city of Castle Place, city of Castle Hills, a wonderful place to lead as city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Uh, just for transparency, all the council members were given a evaluation form that we'll be sharing with Mr. Rapley directly outlines a variety of components as it relates to his position and also identifies room for improvement. Uh, I do want to give council members an opportunity to say any comments that they might have in relation to Mr. Rapley's performance as city manager. Mr. Isbrand?
Well, I think Mr. Rapley pretty much did an excellent job of outlining um, exactly where the city has gone in the last couple of years and the leadership that's come from him and his collaboration with the staff. So I thank you first of all for that. It's it's nice to be in a professional environment like this and to have that that type of leadership that you exert. I personally appreciate the fact that I text you all day and all night sometimes and that you always respond. Although some of the times I think of what you really want to say instead of what you, how you do respond. But your willingness to be available whenever we need you or need a question answered, I think is just a stellar example of the the dedication, professionalism, and commitment that you have to the city. And I I could not, you know, as you were listing many of the things I could not keep up with. All the many more I would add to that list that has been accomplished, and I hope that the residents of this community realize how fortunate they are. So I thank you for that. Mr. Rapley, the one thing you'll probably guess that I will ask for you to always be vigilant on is in your communication with residents that the one, I think the the role we all have is sometimes to be a conduit. And I know that you juggle many, many balls all day long. Uh, but I know how important it is to our residents when they hear from you and hear from you in a timely fashion, how much how appreciated that is. So I will always ask you um, to continue to perform in that regard. And then the other observation they would make is in the the reporting area. I think it would be of tremendous value to this council if once again you could return to doing a monthly report for the council. We never hear from the department heads unless we bump into them or have a conversation. I'm always fascinated by hearing the stats of, you know, fire department rolls on this many calls, police department has this much whatever courts is doing this, finance is doing this. I think that your effort to convey that to the council on a regular basis is invaluable. I know when I first came on council, there was a monthly report. I think we're probably all been distracted by the many, many things that have happened along the way, but I would like to encourage you to do that. And lastly, I'd just like to say that I don't, it doesn't escape, I don't think any of us, that your your leadership and that steady hand was so important as we tried to navigate the city through the worst of the COVID pandemic. And I appreciate all the work that I saw you personally do and all the days and times that you would be up here and be willing to expose yourself when others were hunkered down at home to make sure that the city services proceeded forward. So I thank you very much for your excellent work. I hope the observations that I have will be taken in the good spirit in which they're intended, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Ms. Haley?
Well, I can't. I'm so sorry. I can't speak to a lot of these questions right now. I can tell you that the years I've known you here as a resident, how much I've appreciated the communication that we've had. And I went Friday to an ACOG newly elected officials workshop. And sitting in that workshop and hearing the presentations from people, I thought, man, oh, man, have we got us a great city and a great city manager. I not that the people, because the people were excellent. And I was sitting there and I thought, and we've got one too. And I just, it made me so happy to feel that and know that. And a lot of the things that they talked about, I thought, we do that. Well, we we got this, you know, so I I'm I'm grateful that I went. And I'm I'm grateful for you and what you do and how you do it. The one thing I would suggest, one thing I learned out of this thing I went to on Friday. Well, the city manager that was there, he said, I I get my agenda out a week ahead of time to give people time to give the council time to look and ask questions or be able to. And you can always update it. And I said, are we talking about to the council or to the what you publish? He said, I don't know. I publish it. And then I can update it. But then if we've got a question and things that we're not, we're not settling them here. We can, we have time to get feedback from, give you feedback and go from there. That'd be the one thing I would think about and and we can't over communicate good news. What's what Mr. Isbrand said, we we can tell some great stories about great things that happen here and and you're the keeper of a lot of those stories, you and your staff. So I'll encourage you to to tell tell us more. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, what I will say is on the agenda process, I think we've made significant strides. Uh, we adopted the rules of order that said, here's when you can turn in agenda items and it from my early days here, it was difficult because there was not a process in place. Um, I certainly have worked and now Ms. Franco is here and our staff, I mean, there's a goal to say, let's try to get it out by Thursday at least. That gives you an extra day, but um, I think staff can plan accordingly, and there's no reason that we can try to get out a few extra days so you have that time to review the agenda.
And if we need to do our part to get the things that we need to you so that you can do that. I I'm, again, I don't know what processes are in place for that. I just thought that would be helpful that we have a little more time to review and and ask questions.
I think we can cover that as far as like just in general, the agenda process.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
Just the other day, I was reflecting on what's happened between 2019 and the present. Councilman Isbrand and myself ran for particular reasons. And it is not lost on me that the person that had to deal with the most unjustified criticism and performed so well with grace under pressure shows that you're a true professional. I don't think that should be overlooked. Uh, you have in my mind almost single-handedly with the help of key council members kept us on an agenda to right some of the errors of failed infrastructure, for example. Uh, keeping us on track to be transparent and civil in our process. I think you've been a key factor because never have you failed to return a call. Uh, and sometimes I know I can be persistent and um yet you do return the calls. And sometimes you take it in real time and I know what that's like if you're a busy person, so. I just want to get that out, the second thing is uh a- as someone once said, we have met the enemy and it is us. Uh, and I mean it collectively, um, we have a lot of ideas up here, sometimes we're not the best. In keeping ourselves on track and reminding ourselves that if we bring up an agenda item. And it dribbles away, well, we're, we're responsible and so I, this is a challenge to me myself. And to every council member that we don't lose that thread and I think I can do a better job. And I think we all can do a better job in communicating with you and making sure that agenda is tight. And uh up to the minute and we don't let those good ideas dribble away.
Thanks, sir, and just real quick going back to Mr. Isbrand's comment and I. Um, I did do a city manager report and it was pretty comprehensive and um. And, and that's something that I, I need to go back to doing to communicate to council, because I think that was the. One biggest piece for you all to know what's going on on a monthly basis, that leads to so many things, um. I'm not sure where it dropped off and maybe just from a staffing and COVID, I'm, I'm not sure, um but I think. That's something I used early on to communicate to council. Um, regardless of what was going on here during those times to make sure that everyone knew. Everything that was going on and it was, everybody was on the same page, so, but definitely, I appreciate it, Mr. Isbrand, go back to doing that as well.
Mr. Joyce.
Well, I'll just summarize it by saying, Mr. Rappley, you're doing a terrific job, thank you. Um, in terms of strengths, I knew that we were in for a new era of professionalism, I'm sure many of us did. In the early going, when you introduced our little city to something known as a CIP. Which had never been used before and was so desperately needed. But you brought that to us in addition to all of the other uh things that you've brought to us. I'm particularly grateful for your support of the comprehensive plan. Um, you guys may not be aware of it, but Mr. Rappley had his intern. Basically do the uh. Putting together of the comprehensive plan, we wrote it, but he put it into a document. Dropped in all of the photographs, all the graphics, typed up all of the text. And so that was Mr. Rappley's generosity in making use of staff, I think he's also very good at staff, for example, and how he handles. The um financial position. When the combination of Ms. Davis's talent and outside talent. And you've made it work, you know, and, and it's, it's really a terrific thing. Um, so your main skill, in my opinion, I agree with Mr. Isbrand is communication. As soon as we text you or call you or whatever, we're going to hear back from you really fast and that's a tremendous thing. Appreciate that very, very much. The, the thing about communication and I think. Might help a little bit to be improved would be, for example, the calls that I receive most of the time have to do with more. Uh, beautification things, the yard and that trim and their yard or the paint is coming off the house or whatever it is and. You know, and, and working with uh with Ron, it's very clear that he's on top of things. But it, it would be helpful if we kind of knew what he was up to and so when somebody called. I think Mr. Isbrand mentioned the idea of the, the report, the monthly report. Whether or not that's it, I don't know, that, that may be one methodology, but at least in that one department to be able to know what, what's going on. But um, you know, it's, it's just a terrific thing, the only other thing I would suggest, this is going to sound silly. But um. I would prefer that our, our budget process be a little bit more streamlined. I, I know it's important to, to listen to the staff needs and their desires, but I just wish that it were a little, a bit more streamlined. And um. I think that uh. Well, I know some of the other comments have been mentioned, so. What I would conclude with by saying, um, the, the, the. Criticism, criticism is supposed to be constructive, it's intended to be constructive. Uh, you're doing a great job, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, Ms. Danes.
Um, hi, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I just want to say, Mr. Rappley, thank you. Um, along with Ms. Haley, I haven't, I, I know she's only been here weeks and, but I've only been here. Um, a year and I think that you have done an amazing job as a resident here for fifteen years. The continuity that you have put into place. Um, is, is fantastic, like, like nothing I've seen before. Um, it's greatly appreciated, thank you very much for all of your efforts and for um the experience that you brought to this position. Um, I also would like to just kind of reiterate some of the same comments that the other council members made. I feel that you are very communicative, you do a great job responding. To texts and emails and like some of the others on council. I don't always do that between nine and five, Monday through Friday and you always answer no matter what and it's very much appreciated. Um, you definitely don't take this job as a, as a nine to five, um and I think all of the city is grateful for that. Um. I, I think that's kind of everybody else has, has said um a lot of things and I just want to express. Um, my gratitude um for, for all of the efforts, your. Your statement at the beginning just reiterated how many things you've done and how far we've come in the short period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Danes. I, I want to kind of tie all that together because y'all have all made really good points and I don't know that I, I have any generic thoughts, but. I, I do agree that a report giving a snapshot of what's going on in the city would be very helpful. I think that so many of us are caught up in our personal lives, our professional lives and. A little bit of what we do here at the city, it's hard to keep track with everything going on. Between all the different departments and to the extent that we could get a snapshot monthly, I, I think that would be very helpful. A- along those same lines, I know that we've done a good job with the comprehensive plan and with. All the capital improvement plans and I'd like to see. A strategic vision for the city going forward. Uh, I guess a little more higher level, so we have a plan that we're loosely following because there's. So many great bodies of works that we have as a city. That it's important that they don't just sit on the shelf and collect us and I know that you have a lot of irons in the fire. And to the extent that we could have something like that, I think it would be very beneficial. Along those lines. I realized that it would be impossible for us to have made the progress. That we've made as a city or not for the continuity that we've had. Largely in the city manager position with Mr. Rappley. We're too small of a city that we don't have. The department old overhead muscle horsepower. And a lot of this falls on Mr. Rappley. Uh, following through uh with his. Connections with his relationships that he has across the city and the county that really make getting things done possible. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't thank him for the progress that we've been able to make as a city because. It wasn't that long ago where we were not. We didn't have nearly as much progress as we do now. And I think. Part of that progress is also due to the culture that he's helped build. There were some dark days we had uh in twenty nineteen. And I think the staff has come together to. Be more than just employees but a family and they feel that they can do that under Mr. Rappley's leadership. And to that point, I think one example of that is in discussing this evaluation. And potentially compensation. Mr. Rappley said that he wanted to forego any compensation adjustments right now because his primary objective. Was ensuring that we got two to one for staff. And so hearing that is a reminder that we have the right person in the job because. It isn't just about him, but it's about his team. And. Think we all realize how important the city team is to. The success of Castle Hills and so thank you for being selfless in that regard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, any further comments?
That's the difference between being a manager and being a leader. And that's what leaders do is do that, so I didn't know that. I, I commend that, thank you.
And so just to clarify, I did tell him that we would. See how things fell out during the budget season, making sure the priority is two to one, but I do want to make sure that we. At least evaluate his compensation because it's been a couple of years since that was originally done or last done, I should say. I don't think we need any action on this, Mr. Schnall, do we need to review the, uh, accept the evaluation?
Uh, no, sir, I think that's an, I, that's optional, I think everyone's voices were heard. Um, on, on this during this meeting and so the minutes can reflect. The appreciation expressed uh for Mr. Rappley's work.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Okay, in that case, I will proceed to announce as a mayor and council.
Do we need to go to exec on the? On the other, that we talked about the prior vacation? That.
Mr. Schnall.
You have the option of going to an executive session on, on anything related to the evaluation. Um, and deliberation about Mr. Rappley and his performance. Um, if there were a motion to be made, it would be made in open session. Um, so if, if the council needs um more explanation about the issue that Mr. Rappley raised. That would probably be best done in an executive session, um and then the council could come back and. If someone wanted, could make a motion to take action, no action is taken in the executive session. But there can be discussion and explanation about the issue that uh Mr. Rappley referenced a moment ago.
Okay, um, Mr. Rappley, are you prepared for executive session?
Uh, yes.
Okay, but that being said, uh, we are going to proceed to executive session pursuant to government code. Section five five one dot zero seven four, personal matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation duties or the city manager. And take possible action, it is may, uh, Monday, June twenty six, twenty twenty three at eight twelve PM and we're going into executive session. How do we get that? Okay, does she know? Okay, we are back from executive session. It is eight twenty-three, Monday, June twenty-six, twenty, twenty-three with no action taken. Brian, uh, Ms. Danes needs to be let in. Mr. May, you have a motion?
Uh, yet, yes, Mr. Mayor. Consistent with the exceptional performance evaluation and the deferred leave compensation issues, uh, unaddressed, I move that the council authorize the mayor to approve back leave compensation consistent with the April twenty twenty-three memo regarding that compensation for two hundred and seventy hours of uncompensated leave uh, between the years two thousand eighteen and twenty twenty for Ryan Rapley.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
A second. Just, uh, was for vacation, but it was two oh seven, so.
So we have a vacation, um, motion, uh, motion by Mr. May, a second by Mr. Joyce on favor. Unanimous council, thank you so much, Mr. Isbrand, we have announced as a mayor and council members and items of community interest.
Yes, sir. Council, uh, mayor and council residents just want to give a shout out yet again to the Castle Hills Community Organization for hosting Splash Day on June seventeenth. It's like Mother Nature, uh, decided to cooperate and make sure it was particularly enjoyable with the brutal heat. So thank you to everyone who was involved in that and everyone who came out to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, Ms. Haley.
How much time do we have? I'm just kidding. I'm grateful to live here. I'm grateful to be here. I'm grateful for the city manager of the staff that we have and alongside just by colleagues. There's a lot going on here and we've got great stories to tell and we can all tell some more of them. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley, Mr. May.
Very briefly, uh, it's going to be July fourth weekend. So again, I just want to remind people to be community leaders and, and look out for pets, neighbors' pets.
Thank you, Mr. May and Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, May. I'm, I'm pleased to announce that we have, uh, some really good candidates for our Economic Development Committee. And next month we will be, uh, presenting them and I'll say a few words about each of them to y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, Ms. Danes. Mr. Rapley?
Uh, no, just to tie in what Mr. Joyce says, I'll be sending out those applications ahead of the July eleventh meeting for review.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Uh, I want to thank everybody for joining us on the special meeting. Uh, I do want to recognize Mr. Isbrand. I know this isn't his last meeting, but, uh, I think it's important to note that the amount of time he has served the city, uh, specifically the time that he elected to join city council was not our brightest moment. And so the work that you've done helped get the city to a good spot and to be an example for us all, including myself. Uh, I really appreciate it and I think the city is grateful for your service. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
We have a second. Say my Mr. Joyce, all in favor. Unanimous, it is eight twenty-seven, meeting is adjourned. Everybody have good evening. Thank you for being here with us.